And I had been watering the last two years, started with the group. Last year it happened that I was the only volunteer that came back. So I watered Mondays and Wednesdays and the city had a young summer helpers, a boy and a girl water on Fridays. Our flowers looked good, but they weren't spectacular. And then when I heard they weren't coming back, I was very disappointed and I asked a couple of people, well, do you think I could do something? And so I put an ad in the paper, help me save the flowers for 2022. And as of now, I have raised nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, I believe is the total. So you know that people want our flowers to appear again. I don't think I would have collected that much money if I had, if there wasn't a need or a liking, having them make our city look good. This is great. We're on track. Thompson's Nursery was told that they weren't going to get the contract back. And I called them right away when I started my advertising to catch donations or get donations. And they said they would hold their flower order and they did. And we have those flowers growing out at Thompson's Nursery. They're little, but they're going to grow and they're going to look great. But when I worked, when I started out, I called a gal that started the flower project in St. Joe. Her name is Carol Tyson. And Carol said, Shirley, your flowers look good, but I believe they're too tall. You just don't get the dramatic, beautiful effect because you have to look up. They should really be kind of at an eye level. So my concern then too was maybe to lower those and get some new brackets. I checked with a manufacturer in St. Joe. He was supposed to call me back with a dollar amount today, but the city had kind of, what I heard from Bridget that the city doesn't want me to go ahead with any new brackets. We'd just like to see them the way they are.
Well, that's, I know we talked about it, but we just, we were just worried more when it's lower about vandalism.
I went to St. Joe today to research that. I talked to Joe Bechtold. He's one of the guys. They have three gentlemen that have been watering their flowers. And they start at five in the morning. There are three dairy farmers that are retired. And they had time, so they would get up at five in the morning and water there. They would each take a week in the month. Joe said that yes, he did see once some kids dinging around with them. But he told them that if they were going to do that, they were going to water those flowers for the rest of the summer. Obviously, they didn't really want to work, so they didn't mess with them. And I did check with the city hall at St. Joe today. I talked to a Ryan. And he said that they have not had an incident with the police department on any vandalism. Although that doesn't mean our bars won't have individuals that might want to mess with them. But they're, they're, I would like, ours are 12 feet high, St. Joe's are 10. So they do, the flower baskets then come down about a foot with their leggings onto the basket. I guess I would like you to think about it. I did take some pictures I could show you. Their pole, then one other concern was that the poles would stick out to the city that it could catch on a truck or something. No, the poles go just like the rods go, just like they are. And they have a metal there made of steel and they buckle around the circle and then bolts go through. So they said that they would sustain at least a hundred pound basket on each side. And our baskets approximately with X number of gallons of water are eighty, could be up to eighty pounds. So I wouldn't want you to get anything that wasn't certified or, you know, provided a good guarantee that something wouldn't happen to the, to the bracket. Again, I just want to then just tell you thank you for letting me go ahead with the program. John's been good about helping me keep that little Toro running the last couple of years. And I do appreciate that. We are going to make those flowers look the best we can this summer. And, you know, I thought even if I could ask, if I could get the gentleman to build me four sets. You know, I have money in that, kind of that budget that I grew. Even if we can hang some and then just see how they do and see if it is that more effective, beautifully, you know? But again, that's up to you. And if we want to just leave it this summer, that's fine. Maybe we can review it again next summer. The money that I have left over, I will just leave in that fund. Just to let you know how much I wanted this program, I have a thousand dollars that I put into that fund. And we would only need a couple more hundred dollars, so we would have enough money for the flowers for next year already. So you guys would be kind of off the hook. Because I, I, St. Joe is such a beautiful community and those flowers just pop. And I would like to see that happen for our community, especially with the splash pad and the trails. Good businesses that people will come to town with price of gas and still COVID. Hopefully they'll still spend, or maybe more people will come to our community over summer. So thank you for letting me tell me my story and.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shirley.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Really appreciate your work.
All right, very good. Somebody hit the button?
No, leave it. Otherwise, we'll move on to. Otherwise, we'll move on to number three, approval of the amended agenda. I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. I'll move. Mike makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll do it.
Fran seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number four, consent agenda, recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Fran makes a motion. How about a second?
A second time.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number five, revolving loan fund agreement for KHK Properties LLC, Gary Kees and Greg Kees.
You have to hold it down a little longer. There you go.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Should I talk?
I could start. So at the EDA meeting earlier this month, EDA recommended approving a revolving loan fund agreement with Gary and Greg for their KHK properties for the demolition of the Kees building. There were some, at that meeting on that Monday, which was the day before last city council meeting, there were some adjustments to some of the language. So it had been in your packet, but pulled out. So what you got this week was just the new agreement with the, you had seen the red line. I think you saw the red line, but it's now, it's accurate to what it's supposed to be. And so it's here now for council discussion.
Okay, you guys got anything else?
I guess I don't know exactly what you guys have all heard. I mean, if you're pretty informed, I don't know if there's more for us to discuss if you guys have questions.
I mean, if you want to give just a quick brief, just for the people that might be watching or anyone here, so.
We're purchasing a building through a partnership from our grandparents, actually. And most people probably realize there's been a lot of environmental issues, concerns. My grandparents have done quite a bit of the work already on that, but there's still more to be done. So what we came to you guys with was requesting money under the revolving loan fund to tear it down, abate some potential environmental concerns and things like that. And then furthermore, we're looking to develop the property into something, you know, down the road. But at this point, we're just looking to acquire it, get it torn down, and then from there, develop it.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm going to read a recommendation then. To approve the payment to KHK Properties LLC for a loan from the revolving loan fund of up to eighty-five thousand dollars. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Fran makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. There you go.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Number six, resolution 2022-13, a resolution approving a special use permit for Grafton Integrated Health Systems. Hello.
Hi. I'm Lori Schmidt. I'm the executive director at Grafton. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay, I'll start over.
Yeah, under our code, fence heights are maxed out at six feet. In the city code for industrial and commercial, it can be eight feet, but under a special use permit, it can go up higher than that. And Grafton has submitted a special use permit, came to planning last week to talk a little bit about the need. And I'll let Lori talk about that in a second. And planning did make a recommendation to approve the special use, but I'll let Lori explain why they need it.
Okay. So we currently had submitted our original plan with an eight-foot fence for, to develop a playground area for the children that will be serving. If you're not familiar with Grafton, we're developing a up to thirty-bed residential facility for children with mental health and also intellectual disabilities or autism. So these are kids that, you know, are, are, will be out of home and residing in our facility. Anywhere between three and six months typically. But some of them have behaviors and some of them are nonverbal, but very capable of running. And an eight-foot fence creates an obstacle course, as I explained to the planning and zoning. And as I've talked to the police department about. And some of our staff might be able to follow, but some of ours might not be able to jump the fences easily. And so a twelve-foot fence is what we have in our existing facility in Berryville, Virginia. And that has been found to be very successful in preventing children from scaling and leaving the facility. So it's for our children's health and safety, especially with County Road Two so close and with the semi-traffic going to the distribution and brewing. So with all of that, we felt that we really needed to make sure that the children couldn't get out as easily. There's no barbed wire. We plan to do the landscaping around it. We don't want it to look institutional. We want it to look very inviting and, and welcoming. The last thing we want people to think is that you have some sort of, you know, prisoner.
They're caged in there.
Caged in there, exactly. And we wouldn't want anyone to believe that we're caging children. Because that's not, that's not good for anyone.
That's not what it is.
So we plan to put a nice playground in the, in the area within the fence. And we plan to, we're looking at putting tiles in the fence. It's a small link fence, not the big chain link, because we don't want their, the bigger chain links are easier to scale. So we do look at that too. But there's little tiles we can get to make it more decorative, we found out. And then we plan to do some greenery around it and actually try and beautify it around it, both inside and outside the fence line. So with all of that considered, I have talked to the chief of police, Chief Bloom, and he was supportive of it. I think he will agree. It will reduce the calls and risk of children leaving. There will be a gate, the only vehicles that can access inside is with the gate opening, and that would be air recycling. But at that point, children wouldn't be out there, or if there was some reason to do any work in that, that area of the building.
All right. I will read the recommendation then. To approve resolution 2022-13, a resolution allowing for a twelve-foot fence at, at property located 224 Craze Mill Road in the C3 Highway Commercial District. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion. Mike second it?
Yep.
Mike seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for you. How many, do you have any children up there or anyone planned to be up there?
We, we've currently acquired our first of our two licenses.
Okay, yeah, I know that.
So we have our SLF supervised living facility license in place. DHS is coming out on Friday to do a site inspection for our variance license, which will allow us to start taking children.
Okay.
And we have completed our hires, but had to bump our orientation for our final nursing hires to May ninth. I think that's a Monday.
So getting much closer.
So we plan, we're looking at mid-May for our first admins.
Admin.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Nice.
Yeah, so we're very excited.
That is exciting.
And that will bring families, we'll, we expect family therapy, so we want our families to come visit the children. So that will bring people to the community. So we're putting a list of to-dos. So if you have recommendations of activities for families, let us know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On or off?
Leave it on. All right, number seven, ordinance 400, an ordinance allowing for community centers in the residential districts by special use.
Yes, this is being presented by city staff, myself and some of our admin staff. In the current zoning use table, community centers are not allowed in residential districts. There is, coming before you, the fieldhouse issue, which would fall under the definition of community center and would not be allowed at the park because that's R1. But in addition, and this is an ongoing issue, I keep finding about three years ago, the school district came to me about some construction and I realized that schools weren't allowed in the R1. But our schools are zoned in all R1. And so we amended the, the city council at that time did a text amendment to put schools as a special use permit. Well, community centers, I don't know if anyone watched or was at the school board meeting last night. They've done their facility survey. And one of the things that's a potential referendum question is about a community center on their campus for like indoor, community rec, et cetera, which wouldn't be allowed for them to build on that campus because it's not allowed right now. We don't want to permit some uses that really need some site, you know, oversight on traffic flow, on size, on all those items that can cause congestion, noise, et cetera. And so we proposed planning last week and they approved. They recommend approving this ordinance to allow community centers in the R1 by special use so that people have to submit plans, they have to come to you, talk to you, and you can give them advice and guidance on what is and isn't allowed. So.
All right, recommendation then. To approve ordinance 400 allowing community centers in residential districts by special use permits. I need a motion on that.
We'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Mike seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. All right, number eight, construction committee, community survey and site inspection for granite landing discussion. Ken Kramer and Audrey Niernhausen. Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
So we're just kind of giving an overview of what we've done the last few meetings, right?
Okay.
You want to start it? I'll start. Our first meeting, we were separated. The, we had the two committees. And then our last meeting, we brought it together. And we visited St. Joe and Sartell. And then for the library, that was for the PD. And then we got to see the fire station as well in Sartell. And then the last one, we went to Kimball and, you have Anandale Libraries. And then with that, we had some discussion that we've all kind of had different feedback from community members. All of us, you know, different people talking to each one of us. And then the architect recommended doing a outside survey or having an outside third party do a survey so the community could be involved, so the community could give their take on things. And the survey, correct me if I'm wrong, is real non-biased. So it's there, they get information from all of us. And then they create the questions in a non-biased way to get community members feedback. And then from there, move, decide how to move forward with the project.
And as, as to that, there, um, and I wanted some guidance on this from all of you. So the school district is earlier in their discussions than you all have been and the city has been for the last year and a half. So the, Wendell's going to be coming on May tenth for our next meeting.
Oh, yeah, that was.
And they're going to give us all the different layouts that they, you know, the committee has said, well, what about these two together? And what about these two together? So the goal is to have the committee come to you with, or, or tell Wendell. And then Wendell will give a report to you that these are what the configurations they came up with, and these are what the committee is recommending. So the question is, do we do the survey on whether to do anything at all? Or do we wait and have the survey be, okay, at May, we're hoping to have that at a special council meeting on May 31st. So on May 31st, the council will say, focus on this, these two together and these two together, or this one. You know, once you've made an overall arching, is it two departments together? Is it three locations? Whatever you come up with, then survey on cost estimates, et cetera.
So I have, I have a question for you, Bridget. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you, are we making sure that all the costs that we're incurring since this has begun, this new committee and everything, is separated from the actual project? Because I want to see like how much this is costing the city? And then are we really going to be saving money in the end? I, I'm just ultimately very curious about that. So that in future, in future projects, we can say, hey, no, you know what, you guys? We actually tried that before and it didn't save us any money. It just, it just wasted six months or three months or two months.
So since September, what, so what we paid up through September and then when this, when we stopped and started this new process?
Yes. Yeah, because it would be, it would be just whatever's costing us on this new process that we're doing until we start the project back up again, in my sense, just to see like, are we actually going to be saving money? Or is it going to just be a wash? And we just lost three months' worth of work time. So I'm just out of curiosity. So I'm going to show up at the next meeting just so I can vote. I'm just kidding. I can't, but.
Come on, ask for an extension.
I can't. Won't be in the city anymore, but.
Sure, I can, I can bring that to the council if the, if the remaining council members want to hear that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
No, I think that'd be something that we should look at, yes. Mike?
I like the idea of a community survey and it would seem to me it would make some sense to have it after this next meeting. So they'd have something tangible to look at and see.
I know it is really time sensitive. Do you remember what she said? It was, it really had to fall perfectly to get it out.
I did call, so because they had a marketing firm do theirs, who's familiar with the Cold Spring, Recorri area. I did call the gentleman that performed the Recorri one to ask him about timing and everything. And he said, if, if you wanted to do it before you even decide configuration or you wait to configuration of.
And then you do it.
And then you do it. Either way, there's plenty of time.
There is, okay.
Yep.
How is this getting out to the community?
What they did is a phone survey. So they do a random selection. We give them everyone's, everyone in the city.
Water, like do we base it off of?
We would do it on the, on the taxpayers of Cold Spring. So they would get the whole and they would do a random. They got all of the taxpayers of Recorri School District, and I think they did 24% were from residents of Cold Spring. And I think it was 18 were Wakefield, and 1111 were Richmond and Rockville.
Four hundred.
And then the rest were the other outline townships. And they get 400 calls and they said that's a plus or minus of 5%. So it's like any random telephone survey. And those, I didn't ask him, but I, I would assume those are quicker to do. You get the responses back quick.
And those are people who answer the phone.
Yeah, and they only got, and 5% hang up. So out of the, they got 400 responses, so 5% didn't.
Were you calling local phones or cell phones?
They were doing both. They even, they, in that. They were doing both, even, they, in that survey, they said, what was it? What were the numbers? They broke it down even, like, how many households that they surveyed are just cellphone households, how many are just landline houses and how many are both? So they explained how they cut, they got people with cell phones, they got people with landlines, they got people who own both.
Wasn't the average phone call approximately fifteen minutes?
Yeah, some were forty-five and others, yeah, there were. It was, it, it, I would suggest, if you didn't watch it, watch his presentation, it was very interesting.
It just seems that so many people are getting spam calls all the time now. And, you know, are people going to pick up, or is it going to come across as spam call or?
I, I don't know, but they ended up getting four hundred, so I don't know how many didn't pick up. But they got four hundred responses, so I don't know what the number of total calls.
Eight hundred people to get four hundred.
Right, I don't know, I have to find that out.
No, they, they only called four hundred.
Probably, or something could be.
They only called four hundred?
They only called four hundred and it was, if I'm not mistaken, four percent hung up on them, the rest of them.
Oh, okay, that's how, that's how that works.
Answer one way or the other, forward, against it, whatever, some were shorter, but you're right, up to forty-five minutes was some discussions.
Yep, so.
And I think it caused sixteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, he gave me a proposal that if we're doing it as the after, you know, when you already say, okay, fire and police are going to be together, city hall or on this location, once a decision on what the makeup of each structure would be, it would then be a survey based on that, and that's twelve thousand.
So he said, so that would only be sixteen people who didn't partake in the survey out of four hundred. Sixteen people would, I, there has to be more people that didn't answer their phone, I can't imagine it would be, only sixteen people out of four hundred.
There was a lot of publicity with that survey though, so people may be expecting.
Yeah, and we would do that too.
And the architect did say that too, to put it in the paper.
We would put it everywhere, yeah, we would.
If they're anticipating it, then that's different.
Yeah, and we would do that if that's what you want to do.
I think it would be nice for the community to feel like they have a voice.
Involved.
Yeah, that they're involved, because whenever anyone has said things to me and I say go to a meeting Tuesday night, that's exactly, that's what I get. No, I'm not going, no, I'm not going to that, but this way they can voice their opinion, be part of it, and then they can't.
And they can be anonymous.
Yeah, and they can't complain if it, you know, they had their voice, they had their chance.
Perfect.
Yep.
Do you have to take action on that?
No, I don't think at this time, I think at May tenth, we'll, we'll have more from, we meet that morning, or that late afternoon or something like that.
Right.
And I'll have some more information and then probably at that point discuss with you if you want to go on with the survey and it, in which way you want to do it, be pre-determination of who goes with who or post.
Because the tenth is when we look at the plans.
Right, when we make the recommendation to you, but you won't get that report till May thirty first. So do we do the survey based on what the recommendation is going to be to you, or wait till you make a decision? On what, you're probably going to get two or three different configurations, so do you want it based on those two, or do you want it based on what you decide, and then we can put dollar numbers on that as well? Because if it's library and city hall and police are going here, or fires going here, then we can do a better estimate on how much each thing is going to cost. So I think we would want to do it after the thirty first, but definitely advertise that we're going to be doing it, once you make that decision.
I think my thought is that one of the questions the community would have is what's the cost?
Right.
So, and we can't get that till the, it's impossible.
Thirty first.
Under the survey at school, they didn't have dollars and he stressed very much that, okay, do you want a fieldhouse? Well, a lot of, it was a very high percentage, like seventy-some percent said yes. But what is it going to cost us?
Yeah.
And they didn't have dollars, so when they, when they showed their surveys and all their slides, you know, was a lot in favor, but, and then it came down to.
The money.
Money, how much is this going to cost us, you know, and this, this here project is the same thing. I will say, the tours did a lot for me. Um, I definitely had some questions with our, our police space, and I really think talking to other police officers and things, um, I was really surprised in, in what needed and, uh, how things work today versus they did when I was on the force. And, um, so my mind was changed in, in a different direction on a lot of things with our police department. I do have to say that I'm very proud of Bridget. Uh, she is the most conservative one in this whole process. She by far is not expecting extra space in case. And, uh, so hands to you in, in your help in this whole process and stuff. I think things are going very well, I think things are coming together, I get your frustration on this whole thing, I, I mean, I really do. But you got to look at it as the taxpayer side of the two, that we didn't know anything about this. I've been on these departments, I still feel that it shouldn't be out of town, it should be in our heart of town. And that part did not change, but location might change that whole thing, well, we might end up back out there. If it does cost the same, well, so be it, I mean, uh, at least the citizens and taxpayers of Cold Spring had their safe soul and we get to put it and we definitely want to build something and we definitely need it. Uh, we just feel that, my, my feel especially is that when you put up beautiful buildings and, and things, I just as soon see them in our heart of Cold Spring. Where we can show it off way better than in an industrial park on the very edge of Cold Spring. That's our, my main goal and, um, we'll see what happens. It, it still might all end up out there in, in a cheaper thing, and we don't know that. And so we apologize for taking the extra time and, and, um, maybe stirring up a hornet's nest, whatever you want to call it. But.
I get it, I mean, that's fine, but I.
So, you know, it, the group is really working good together, don't you agree?
Yep.
And, and, uh, I'm glad we came together versus two separate, because there was too many questions back and forth. And everybody is, listen to each other, we respect each other, uh, we walk out, we smile, we talk. And, and that's the way it should be, and so.
Yep. One thing, one thing we did talk about was the, um, concern on the one site you gave me approval to go negotiate on.
Oh, yeah.
This, the existing soil borings aren't really where any structure that, it, they weren't doing soil borings when they did them for a building, they were doing them for environmental. And so one thing, um, we need to know is what's in the spot where the building may fit, so, um, I'm, I probably will get some budget, some numbers for you, and at the May tenth, have two bids to do some soil borings and have a better location, because the architect wants the soil borings where all the footings are and where, you know, twelve, fifteen feet along the walls to see what's there, because there, that outcropping is a concern of granite, we don't know where it is. Some of it was at four feet and some of their soil boring, some was at twelve. Well, the architect was telling us that if, if it's at four feet with granite here and sand here, you got to take down the granite to, to put it, to make a building that's level and safe. So that's going to be some issues that will also make that site either way more expensive or not. But we will need to do the soil boring, so at the next meeting.
Are we going to, are we going to find out the price of the property then, too, yet, or?
I know that price.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
Okay.
It's three sixty-eight something, which is the price plus the assessments that are on the.
What was the number?
Three sixty-eight and change, three sixty-seven ninety, something like that.
That included the assessment?
That includes the assessment.
What's the size of that? I think I can figure it out.
We take out, take out about thirty-two thousand and then divided by the number of eight, the eight square feet, and that'll tell you. I want to say four and a quarter, something like that per square foot. Somewhere around there. So, um.
Were there other conforming conditions?
Not that I know of.
Does the granite company have any other conditions?
No, not at this time, but they do when they do purchase agreements. So first that, we weren't ready to talk about those because we were concerned about the soil boring, so they gave us permission to access the property to do the soil borings. And so I will have those numbers for you for the May tenth meeting, to go do those, so that we'll have them ready by the May thirty first.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, guys. All right, number nine, Public Works Director Report, John Stevie, along with Brian Litchin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Hi.
Hey.
On my list for approvals tonight is the dog park fencing. As you can see, it's, it's going to be directly south of where the projected hockey rink is supposed to go in Pioneer Park. Um, there's kind of a nice little spot where it's wasted space per se with some trees. Um, two hundred feet by fifty-eight foot dog park fence, it'd be a four foot high, uh, black decorative chain link fence. The guy that I got the quote from, uh, came out and he said it's about the most common fence that's used for dog parks, so. Um, there's some different gates that go into it, uh, a standard four foot gate for people with the dogs, and then they'll put, uh, two six foot gates that'll open to twelve feet for the lawnmowers and stuff like that. As you can see, it came in at twenty-one hundred dollars under budget, might be the only one this year in twenty twenty-two, we don't know yet, but I was excited about that.
What's the purpose of the dog park?
The dog park is for.
The purpose of it.
The purpose is for people to come there with their dogs and run around, let them run.
Oh, I see. That's their exercising room then, is that what it is?
I guess so.
And for socialization for dogs.
We were approached, I mean, the park board was approached many years ago already about this, and we were, we spent a few years trying to figure out where it would go and get everybody to agree on it, and it was talked about in Frog Town, and then nobody really liked that idea with the amount of parties that are down there and kids and everything else, so we landed a spot by, in Pioneer Park that seemed to work good.
Did you say it was under budget?
Twenty-one hundred under budget, yep.
Believe that.
Sells me.
Should I read the recommendation?
Yeah, go ahead and read the recommendation.
All right, to approve the installation of a, of a dog park fence at Pioneer Park from Advanced Fence and Deck LLC at a price of thirteen thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and forty-one cents. And furthermore, to be paid out of Parks Department Capital Expenditures Line Item sixty-four thirteen. I need a motion on that.
Make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Make seconds at any discussion on it, otherwise all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries, there you go.
All right, um, the other thing I had, just some updates. Um, Brian did call the Great Plains about a logo on our tower, our standpipe. Um, they quoted roughly six thousand dollars to do that work, so it's something for you guys to think about, we have some time, I mean, I don't know.
We would need to decide fairly soon on it. Because they will be putting up the steel in not that long, you know, month or so.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can easily bring this back to the next council meeting or something, if you wanted some time to think about it, but.
He, he did say too, if we, if it's something we're interested in, he would have his guy look at it and then come up with a better cost.
And I mean, you'd have to figure out too what you want on it, if it's just the city logo, or if you want something different on it, or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I think personally, you, you want to take advantage of a eighty foot tower and put something on it.
Yeah, um, does it cost us anything to have him look at it and give us an actual bid? With the city logo?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't guess it's going to be much more than five hundred dollars either way, if he's telling us that, because it is a bolted steel tank, so.
So the, the way.
Straightforward.
The way it comes, it's a vinyl, almost like a sticker.
Yeah.
And so it costs him a thousand dollars a panel to cut it out, to do everything on it.
Okay.
Each panel, depending on where the bolt, the lines are in the panel, in the, the steel panels, and he needs to do a new sticker for each one of those. He was saying probably something more, taking our logo and maybe trying to make it more vertical, just because the long, it's, it's a small diameter tank and you start wrapping it around, you're not going to see it.
Notice it, they can't see it.
Yeah, what is it, twelve foot diameter?
Wrong?
Yep.
So we could put a baseball on it?
Well, it's.
It's a harvester.
It's a cylinder.
Yeah.
It's not a sphere, but.
Right. Yeah, no, yeah, it's just a straight cylinder up.
Yeah.
It's only twelve feet and.
Twelve feet diameter.
You can make it a big baseball bat.
Yeah.
That's a skinny one, huh? Twelve feet?
It's really not, I mean, like, you see the north and south tower there for the storage and everything else, this is more to regulate pressure and give the brewery some capacity if there is power outages and things like that, but it's not to feed the whole town, so that's why it is quite a bit smaller. So, I mean, whatever, we can talk about it, you guys, we can, I can put it on my report next meeting and.
I'm just thinking, yeah, if you shrink down our logo to actually fit it, so you, when you wrap it, you can actually see it on that on one side or something, it's going to be so small.
And I'm not even sure, the tower's eighty feet tall, the distribution center up there is, gotta be close to forty feet though.
I think it's forty-five.
Forty-five, I'm not sure if you'll even be able to see it anyway from Conroe too much.
That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah.
You know, I would say it more so would face towards North Point or something.
Or not at all.
So if, yeah, so if we're just, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
Up to you guys.
We'll talk about it.
Save the money and.
I'll probably reach out to this guy and, or Brian will, and, and get an accurate number, and we can bring it.
Yeah, and then bring it up to the next meeting and see what we.
Sounds good.
So, um, outside of that, the fishing pier is installed and available.
Looks good.
To use, yeah, it turned out really well, the installation went a lot smoother than we had planned.
Good.
So, yeah. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
You got anything?
I don't.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on to number ten, in City Engineer Report, Brian Litchin.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening. Start going on the list here, just some project updates, the twenty twenty-one brewery improvements. Um, they've started doing cleanup work there, there's going to be more this week. We made some pipe connections, and then in a couple of weeks, we'll be, um, behind the brewery tying the last pieces of pipe in, but we need the bituminous plants to be up and running first. Then it's just going to be waiting on components for the lift stations, getting them wired, et cetera. The standpipe, like we were talking about, the, uh, the foundation is in, the pipe is installed, right now we're just waiting on steel. Um, so they have, the foundation is kind of poured into parts, the next piece actually has some of the steel cast into it. Um, so we're waiting for that, and we've heard some time in June, right now.
Okay.
So, like everything else, we're, they're getting delays. The twenty twenty-two improvements, uh, brewery improvements, uh, just working on that design, the soil borings are done. Last meeting, there was a question about the sidewalk and the curb as well would have to go with it for the block between Red River and Fifth Avenue. Rough cost estimate, about seventy-five thousand for that work alone. So it'd be new curb, new sidewalk, taking it out, doing everything associated with that. Trying to take into account some of the smaller quantities, because we don't have a ton of it going on, um, so that's a, don't quote me on seventy-five thousand, it's a ballpark estimate, um, you know, if we got into it, we'd have to, I could estimate it a little closer, but it's, it's not a insignificant piece of the project, so. So, um, I think if, you know, we had talked, I don't know if it would be something that could be assessed or not, but then if you'd start doing that, then you have to start looking at, um, feasibility reports, other things like that in order to comply with state law.
And that would all take time.
That takes time, and then, yeah, and you, you would almost have to look at it as a separate project. I don't know if it could be tied with this project or not, that's something we'd probably have to talk to the attorney about, and if you're doing a separate project. And if you're doing a separate project, you just start introducing a whole lot of other risk factors in timing of work and other things. You have two contract, potentially two different contractors pointing fingers at one another. So that's maybe not the ideal situation is to do it as a separate project.
And to do it afterwards, not really possible.
I wouldn't recommend it because you already got new, you know, you'd have new pavement down, do you really want to go in and kind of tear that, you know, you'd have to try and protect the new pavement and.
So basically, there's not going to be any sidewalk there for twenty five more years.
It all depends on if we decide to get in and do it sooner, you could. That's all entirely, I guess, the council's decision as to if we want to do the work, I mean, the work can be done under, as a straight city cost.
That opened a whole new can of worms.
Yeah.
And and also, for for assessment purposes as well, there's two corner lots that were already assessed for sidewalk on County Road two project. So those would be ineligible for assessments on this project. So you've taken the potential number, if you were to assess it, the potential number from six down to four. I guess if there are areas that, you know, if there's a couple of bad panels, you know, some bad joints, those sort of things, you know, I think those could maybe be addressed as a city cost a lot cheaper. But you, you know, so you have to start looking at the sidewalk, all the gravel that goes with the sidewalk, the curb, gravel under the curb. You got to start redoing driveway approaches, so it starts, it starts adding up in a hurry, especially when we have sidewalk on both sides. One is currently a six footer, the other's a seven, which I'm sure done because there isn't a boulevard there to give it a little more space for snow plowing, so. It adds up in a hurry.
What if you just tore those sidewalks out and turn it into grass for the, for the landowner?
You know, you could do that, would you, it depends then, do you want to put in new curb or, you know, you could probably pull them out and leave the curb.
What would the cost difference be, Brian, if we directional bored the pipe through that section of street instead of open cutting it and we didn't touch the top ground so that instead of waiting twenty five years to complete a project like that, it's maybe turned back into our closer radar of the other streets in downtown that need to be repaid.
Fifth has got to be done one of these years anyway.
It's bad, I mean, it can't be done the way it is.
You're going to, you're going to dig the intersection because you have to make a ninety degree turn.
Yep. We were already directional boring underneath Red River.
Yeah, so you weren't, you weren't going to have a lot of open cut in there in the first place because of that, so that might be might be an option and you just patch the locations that you need to.
Or maybe another option if directional boring is quite a bit higher, which we know it probably is going to be. Instead of replacing that whole, whole street, maybe we just put a patch in it. You know, maybe we just dig what's needed for that section of pipe through that block and we repave on top of the pipe only and not the entire street, knowing that this could be part of our project in the near future here.
I don't know, until we find a way to stop those trucks from coming down there, it's just going to, it's not going to last again, I mean, it's there's a lot of weight coming on that road. But I don't know.
Yeah, those are.
Like we're caught, we're doing a rock and hard place here.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be an option to look at boring the whole thing. Patching or patching what we need.
Yeah, even patching what we need is going to put that road in better shape than it is.
Can't get worse.
I mean, that's an option, it's not that much linear feed, it's probably only going to amount to less than a three quarter block.
Because you got that, you got fifth, that's got to get done one of these years, you got.
And by the time you get back to drill under two, you're probably halfway down the block.
Do you got, we got a few streets out in that.
Second Avenue, Third Avenue, everything around the country store.
General areas, yeah.
First Street South.
There's a lot of little, little projects and as far as street projects.
But maybe when we did, if we were to do Third Avenue, maybe that'll be the time to go back and do, you know, get a bigger sidewalk bend. Because you'd have those sidewalks there connected with those, maybe that'd be a bigger.
Right, yeah, if you, if you were to, it still would be tough to go back because you got to, you're not going to really want to replace the curb if you've put in new pavement on the whole street.
Right.
Because you'll, you'll damage that edge. But if you were to save it to go with the larger projects down the road, you're going to get a better price on everything, just a higher quantity.
Makes it more difficult too with that sidewalk being tied against the curb line too and no boulevard. So they can't really replace the curb unless they hand pour it, I don't know if they'll be able to get their machine through there with the sidewalk butted up to it, but.
The sidewalk or the curb? Yeah, you would, they'd hand pour the curb in there.
Yeah, so the labor cost on that I'm sure is up. Yeah, it's a, it's a tough spot.
If you do it in the future, there's options if you wanted to go to one sidewalk and you could push the road around a little, maybe to get a boulevard, it does open up some options if you were going to fully reconstruct it.
So we, your thoughts are we could patch it for the time being and then tie that complete project there in with, say, Third Avenue? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that would, that would definitely be an option.
Because the, you know, if the, if that block is four hundred feet, I think is the standard city block, and that one might be a little less.
Three, three fifty that one is.
Yeah, so with directional boring underneath Red River, that machine has to stay back so far anyway. So not, that entire three hundred fifty feet's not getting tore up, that machine's going to sit back, I don't know, a hundred feet?
Or more, yeah, at least probably two hundred.
So two hundred feet, so that technically there'd only be a hundred and fifty feet of that street being tore up in the corner of Fifth Avenue where it's going to come around. So you'd have a hundred and fifty foot patch in there for, hopefully it's not sure we approve those other projects, but.
Right.
You know, we'll have to talk about that at budget time, but.
That makes some sense to me.
You know, then you're only tearing up a hundred and fifty feet of new pavement. So that might be the best.
Or even directional boring, you're not going that much farther anyway, are you?
Right.
Probably not, and that, and that's one of the things that now that we have the soil borings back, we really have to start looking at those profile, those boring profiles and how far back do they have to go.
And say, and it's probably, probably just as, just as cheap directional boring it is, is repaving that, that whole top.
Right, well, I mean, you would, if you repaved just over the pipe, you'd only be doing about half the street, so it'd just be a patch.
But originally, they were going to repave that.
From curb to curb, yeah.
So, I mean, you take that out and directional bore that is probably not, not much more, is it?
And not a whole, you're going to dig some up, I think we're going to have an air release manhole in there because it'll probably be a high point. Yeah, you'll, you'll dig up probably for sure the western hundred feet to put some stuff in. But yeah, you're, you're right, the, the cost difference at the time you repave it may not be a whole lot different from just boring the entire thing.
I don't know, unless I'm missing something, that sounds like a better plan.
Yeah, I think so, I think patching that area that would be the cheapest, I think, just based off my construction knowledge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And knowing that the piece that would be getting patched wouldn't be our expense anyway.
Yeah, and I think especially if, if we really feel strongly that we want to do something with the sidewalks there, I think it's probably the best option forward.
Well, then tying it in with a third street, Third Avenue project would make some sense, it would. Maybe the cost would own some.
Yeah.
So now what?
So.
So now what?
I can, we haven't.
Want to get prices on that or?
We have, we haven't even started really designing, I mean, we've just, we're in the design phase right now, so all I have is a a line on paper that says here's where I want to put the pipe.
So it's not too late to be doing this.
No, no, this is, this is the perfect time to, to look at.
Okay.
And then, so I think the first thing I'll do is I'll look at how far back do we think we would end up sitting with the directional drill and does it, yeah, does it make sense?
Okay.
All right, thank you, yeah.
Let's do that, thanks Brian.
Absolutely. Otherwise, water plant, just moving ahead on interior piping, moving ahead on the roof and then shortly we'll be doing some digging in the, in the yard there for a bunch of piping. And then the industrial pretreatment, we pushed the bid, so originally we were going to bid this Thursday, we pushed it to next Wednesday to give them bidders a little bit more time, there were a couple of big wastewater projects, a thirty and a fifty million dollar plant that were going within ten days of ours and both of those were ahead of ours. So by giving it a little extra time, it gives them a couple more days to look at it, sharpen their pencils. We don't rush the contractors. And that didn't change any of our approval dates, we're still looking to bring it to the May tenth meeting.
Okay.
So. We've gotten a lot of questions, so there's good interest.
Thank you.
That's all.
That's it, anybody got anything for Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Number eleven, Police Department report, Chief Bloom.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening.
Hey, Jason.
Not a whole lot for me tonight, one thing is we budgeted for a new squad camera for the new squad that showed up, which actually just came in last week, so it's here, it's getting decals on it, put on it right now, so I'm just looking the one that's, the squad that's getting taken out has it corrupted, that's the SRO, kind of the, the least used squad during the school year, so the camera in that one is currently corrupted, so we need to replace that to go into the new squad.
Okay.
Recommendation, to approve the purchase of a Motorola standard four RE DVR squad camera at a price of five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and furthermore, to be paid for out of the Police Department capital expenditures line item sixty four thirteen, I need a motion.
I'll move on that.
Mike makes a motion, how about a second? Fran seconds at any discussion, otherwise all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries, there you go.
Thank you. Um, and then one of the other things, I included the Cold Spring Community policing agreement, that's kind of what we've been talking about over the last several months. Finally have a finished document for you guys, it was included in the packet for you guys to review. And then there will be a signing celebration on May fourth at six thirty PM at Saint Boniface Church, so.
What was the time, six thirty?
Six thirty, so anybody from the community is welcome. And hopefully there'll be, I think, some refreshments and then cake provided at that. Uh, last thing for me is the speed truck, or did anybody have any questions about the community agreement?
What time was that again?
Sorry, May fourth at six thirty PM.
Six thirty?
Yes.
All right.
And that, yeah, Saint Boniface Church, so, yeah, anybody from the community is welcome, hopefully we have a good group there. And I don't know if they've reached out to you yet, Dave, but I know they were going to have, ask you to make a statement at that. So we'll work on figuring something out for you.
Wow, no. I don't speak.
You can read it.
Outside of that, Speed Truck is out and about, it's over in Richmond right now, but if anybody has any problem areas or any, anybody watching has any place that they would like it for a period of time, please let us know and we will get that out into the community.
All right, First Street South.
It'll be on the list, I'm sure it'll be up there hand for hand.
How, how is that speed, that sign up there?
It's actually, it's good information to have and, yeah, I've heard other reports of, you know, you, you kind of, that ninety two percent compliance rate is kind of what you're shooting for and actually we stay, usually a lot of months are kind of averaging a little above that, ninety three, ninety four percent compliance rate, so we're right in that ballpark of where the expectation is.
Okay.
I think that's pretty good.
Yeah, so, no, it, it, it's cool information to look through.
Have we had any complaints from any residents on that street or like since it's been installed that we know of?
Nothing drastic, like originally when the road was done, when it went from construction to nice new tar again, there was a little bit, but I think it was, cars are going again, it took a little bit to get used to and I haven't heard anything since then.
The lines, the lines slowed people down too, I bet. It seems that way, it just seems that everything got tighter in there.
So, and I noticed that too is with baseball going on now, even the cars on there make you slow down quite a bit. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
You got anything?
You were going to give us a report and you're in snow reports because winter's not over yet, is that?
So it kind of went to a, a priority list and since we're probably not going to get snow anytime soon, we've been really swamped on our end with in custody and different stuff, so I, we are working on that, we will get that, that to you, but it kind of got dropped down to the bottom of the list for right now.
It's not urgent.
Right, so, but no, yes, we are working on that.
Before we get to the ordinance issue, I think we.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got questions. I'm down here to address this, I always miss what day it is, I don't care if I'm interrupting, but when it comes down to me being harassed for two years and Eric Boucher knew that, that Abby.
City Administrator report.
Yes, the first thing I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, the first thing I have on is the ARPA reporting, so as you know, last fall, when we first got our American Rescue, I don't remember what the P stands for, Act. The federal government gave us a total in two payments of four hundred and eighty four thousand, we got the first one already and the council at that time approved using all of ARPA to pay for the difference between what the bonding money was for the treatment plant versus the interfund loan that we have. So it'll reduce the interfund loan. The ARPA reporting at that time was going to be, I have to fill out and say we're using it on a water project and then there was going to be very extensive reporting. Well, they gave out to about seven thousand different jurisdictions, a lot of money and a lot of them are small jurisdictions like ours. And so they, at the final rule, they decided anyone who has less than ten million can report that they're taking a one time allowance, the standard deduction, similar to standard deduction for tax returns, you don't have to itemize or anything. And so I'm requesting through this resolution the authority to take that one time.
Standard.
Standard, I still have to tell them what we're doing with it, so, but I don't have to do the extensive reporting that a water treatment project would, and I'm sure some of those communities that are doing, that got forty and fifty million dollars in our upgrading plants, they're going to go through much more extensive reporting than our small little city. And so the League of Minnesota Cities did recommend that to take that election, that the council direct staff to take the election, and so that's why I wrote that resolution, or use that resolution for that request.
Right, recommendation, to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash twelve, resolution electing the standard allowance available under the revenue loss provision of American Rescue Plan Act.
That's what it stands for.
I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconds at any discussion, otherwise all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I just wanted to give you a little update, you know, when Jess Green was here at the last one and you approved the resolution with the setting that interest rate, the things have gone kind of kablooey with interest rates. Right now, a nineteen year structure like we did, the true interest cost would be at four point two four seven, so it's right below that four point two five that you approved. Their desk thinks that part of that number is because about a week ago, an eighty million dollar taxable issuance from a Texas community, the board, the pricing desk thinks that that kind of skewed government obligation bonds for the most part, they were hoping that will come down. Obviously, the Fed will be next year, next week, so that too may have it. And so if we get the MPCA sign off, which we're still. And so if we get the MPCA sign-off, which we're still waiting for the MPCA permit, we anticipate they will give it before the bids are awarded on May tenth.
Yeah, the twenty-ninth is the end of sixty days, and we've been trying to have correspondence with them, that do they anticipate any issues, and so far, it's been very little response, they don't anticipate. Hopefully, they can turn it around and, and stay in time.
So, at this point, there's some options, so if MPCA gets us that permit and the pricing comes back, and it may be beyond the parameters, you can still award the bonds, just like you would award the bid. Or we can wait to see and have a special meeting between the May tenth and May twenty-fourth, or wait till the twenty-fourth, but there's options still, but I'd wanted to let you know that that, that true interest is budding up to that level, but that doesn't limit you to still award the bonds, even though you made the, the four point two five true interest.
We can still go over.
We can still go over, yeah, as long as we price an award on the same day, so. So it's just a little skewed, I did talk to the brewery about that, and at this point, everything's fine. There is a possibility to add a year to it, to get it down for, you know, they'd like to pay us a certain number of dollars each year, and that's what we were hoping with a nineteen-year, but with the adjustment to rates, it could bump up a little higher, so then we're going to see if PFA would let us add a year to the bond, so that it brings it down to the, the number they budget for. If it doesn't happen, it'll be fine, but so I've let them know, too. But I just wanted to bring you both, all of you up to date on that.
All right.
And with that, all I want to say is thank you, Shannon, for all your support as one of my five bosses in the last four and a half years, so, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything for Bridget?
I'd asked, you were going to contact the landowner or something known by Speedway to see if they were going to be taking care of those?
Yep, and we've been playing phone tapes, so I don't have an answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, go on to number fourteen, no, nope, thirteen, Commission Updates, Planning Commission. I guess we approved everything tonight that we were talked, talked about, so.
Did either of you want to give a little synopsis of CETA?
Well, we, the comp plan, we got the draft comp plan. They promised us that on Monday, and we got it on Monday. And I've been going through the comp plan and noticing a few things I need to probably draw attention to, but it's, it's a slog. Fifty-eight pages on the first.
And they apologized for being late, they were supposed to be done in March.
They did promise it for Monday, and we got it on Monday.
Yeah, but, no, the, the whole, the whole comp plan was supposed to be done.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they apologized and.
But they had some.
They said they were going to make it right.
Employee issues, so.
They are going to make that right, so. E D A, Brian?
E D A was the key thing.
The cases?
Well, sorry, that was covered, I mean, that took up the whole meeting, so, that was that.
Park Board?
Meets on May ninth.
Okay, and Recoray Trail?
Uh, Recoray Trail is, we're getting ready, I think they're out for bid on the project. So the county goes, as the fiscal agent puts out the bid, and I believe they're planning to award, they're due back May twelfth. And then the county commissioners will award, but the Recoray Trail Board will need to do some approval as well, and so that's probably going to be in mid-May, or the first June meeting. We might have to have a special Recoray meeting, depending on how everything falls. But then, construction hopefully will start June.
Good.
No, what day?
In June.
June edition?
Yep.
Good, I hope so. That's it for that, then. Number fourteen, List of Bills and Additions, Recommendation to Review and Accept Payment of the Accounts Payable according to the list and supplemental list presented by city staff, I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second? Fran seconds it. Any discussion on the bills, otherwise, I, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number fifteen, General Questions and Comments from City Council. I have none.
I have none.
Shannon?
I just want to thank everybody that I've worked with on the council and administrative, and everybody that is a part of the city staff, I appreciate all of you and the hard work you do. I am very honored to have been on the city council for so long. Long enough, or whatever we want to call it. But I just want everyone to remember to be a nice human, and to think of a just think of it as a small town and a big family, so just go from there and everything should be good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and I want to thank you, too. And I have nothing other than that. Okay, number sixteen, Motion to Adjourn.
I'll make that.
Fran makes, makes a motion.
I'll second it my last time.
Shannon seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you, guys, very much.